It is 4:30 and this meeting will come to order. Roll call, we have three trustees here, trustee Addison, trustee Panley, and trustee Campbell. Trustee Robinson will be a little bit late. Trustee Bus will not be here until the next meeting. Alright, so we will now begin our new trustee orientation. And some introductory comments. I think it will just skip some of them. So trustee Campbell, I asked you to bring your spiral notebooks so that you can have them and look up the pages that we're talking about, as we're talking about them. And so our first section will be meeting protocol. And that will, we'll start with Robert's Rules of Order for Small Boards by Luke Sommer, who's a parliamentarian. He's also a member of the National Association of Parliamentarians and the American Institute of Parliamentarians. So take it away Luke.
Alright, thank you. Thank you Chairman Addison, members of the board, staff, and yes, they're here. I have written this material out for your memory and for my direction to make it short and concise. Parliamentary procedure basics for small boards is different than larger meetings of 12 or more. So in a group of five trustees, the following rules that we're going to discuss will be the ones that we typically follow. This board is controlled by Title 33, Chapter 27 of the Idaho Code. And is also governed by Article 3, Section 6 of your own set of bylaws. Which states, conduct of the meetings, proceedings of all meetings shall be governed by Robert's Rules of Order for Small Boards that, including that chairman may make a motion. The philosophy of republican governance in the United States is that the rules rule the rulers. So we have authorities over ourselves and we are not the authorities over the stuff that we do unless it's been delegated to us to do that. So why rules of order? One is to get stuff done. Two is to prevent chaotic, long, and disorderly meetings.
Actually, I'm sorry, can you hold on? I'm sure, should the, where is my hand?
You can turn it on, it's picking it up, but okay.
I just wanted to make sure it was there for the recording.
Yeah.
Alright, I see a red light. So I don't need to start over because it was picking it up, okay. But why rules of order? Why, just with a basic question to get started. My natural tendency is to speak extemporaneously. And I would violate the first two principles of this if I did so, so that's why I'm basically going to follow the things that I've written down. To get stuff done, I've got 10 minutes, I should do it in less than that. Second is to prevent chaotic, long, and disorderly meetings. Three, parliamentary procedure is designed to protect the rights of the majority to have their way. The minority to have their say while trying to form their own majority. The rights of the individual member, the rights of absentees to be notified of meetings, and of the organization to exist according to its own purpose and rules. Four, the role of the chairs like that of a referee. The main role of a referee is to make sure that the rules of the game that they are officiating are being followed by all players. Will explain rules as needed and ensure that all participants understand these rules. Referees make calls regarding when these rules are broken and assess penalties. So Robert's Rules of Order for Small Boards. I've got two books with me today. One is Robert's Rules of Order, New and Revised in Brief. This is the first place to go if you haven't really studied parliamentary procedure. It makes it simple. I've read five to seven thousand pages of stuff like this, Mason's Manual, Jefferson's Manual, and then discovered the smart way. Start with the simple side first. Then you get into Robert's Rules of Order, which is what really is controlling the procedure here at this board. A little helpful thing that I found over the years was a little cheat sheet telling me what's in order, when, and other items. But we're not going to cover most of that. That would be a lot. Okay, so the procedure in small boards. In a board meeting where there are not more than about 12 members present, it's different. Some of the formality that is necessary in a larger assembly would hinder business in a small assembly. The rules governing such meetings are different from the rules that hold in other assemblies in the following seven respects. One, members may raise a hand at their seat instead of standing while seeking to obtain the floor, and they can remain seated while making motions or speaking. Second, motions do not need to be seconded. Third, there is no limit to the number of times a member can speak to a debatable question. And there's a footnote that lets you read that separately. Appeals however, debatable under the regular rules. That is, each member except the chair can speak only once in debate on them, while the chair may speak twice. Fourth, informal discussion of the subject is permitted while no motion is pending. Five, when a proposal is perfectly clear to all present, a vote can be taken without emotions having been introduced. Unless agreed to by unanimous consent however, all proposed actions must be approved by vote under the same rules as in larger meetings. Except that a vote can be taken initially by a show of hands, which is often a better method in small meetings. Six, the chairman need not rise while putting questions to a vote. And seven, if the chairman is a member, he may, she may, without leaving the chair, speak in informal discussions and in debate and vote on all questions. How can uncontroversial business get done quickly? Remember the first point was to get business done, to get stuff done. There's a motion known as unanimous consent or general consent, and that would be where the chair states. If there is no objection or without objection, makes a motion, carries on, pauses, and then says, the motion is adopted. So if anyone objected to that unanimous consent motion, then you'd have to go through the regular process of taking a motion. What happens when a majority wants to end the meeting, but a minority doesn't? Anybody ever been to a meeting that has gone longer than you wanted? Or that has become uncomfortable and lengthy? Well, you can make the motion to adjourn or fix the time to which to adjourn, and that can be passed by a simple majority vote. It's a privileged motion, so you don't have to be in your meeting forever. The remainder of business will be taken care of at the next scheduled meeting. If it's an adjourned meeting, it would be then, if it's the next revenue meeting, it would be at that one. Obtaining a floor, this is important. The chair is the one who recognizes the member who then has the right to uninterrupted speech unless he violates the rules of the coram. Nothing replaces consensus, stability, and respect for fellow members. What if you think a rule is being violated? This is frequently what happens and what makes meetings long and contentious. What happens if you think a rule is being violated? Or you disagree with the ruling of the chair? Have a question about procedure or need relevant information? What can you do? And I like to call it poo, pee, ploy, or appeal. Now for those of us that have kids, we know what that means. First, poo stands for a point of order. That can interrupt a speaker and is directed to the chair, not to the other members. A point of order demands that the rules be followed, the chair makes a ruling. Or if you disagree with the ruling of the chair, you can make an appeal. And that is made if any member disagrees with the ruling of the chair on the point of order. In such a case, the chair can speak twice, typically first explaining their actions, and last to summarize. Each member gets to speak only one time. It would take a majority vote in the negative to overrule the chair's ruling. Parliamentary inquiry, the P, that can interrupt a speaker if it's urgent. It's directed to the chair and asks a question about parliamentary procedure or the bylaws relating to the issue at hand. Being an inquiry, it is not a ruling and cannot be appealed. That's important to note that when somebody says point of work, point of work, and then says something that's not a point of work, the chair should identify it as parliamentary inquiry, a point of information, or just a comment and let it go at that. Points of information are different than points of order in that way. So parliamentary inquiry, is that the one I just handled?
Yeah, number three, I think.
Okay. So I want to, four.
You just finished three.
One of us has to pay attention. Alright, so the point of information, that also is a request for information, that can also interrupt a speaker. It's directed to the chair once again. And asks a question relevant to the business before the body, but not related to parliamentary procedure. The chair gives his opinion, but it's not a ruling and it cannot be appealed. Right now, I know that's all kind of quick and dirty, and I had a few minutes for questions if there are any, but who in that? You have a duty in writing so you can think about it, yes?
Yeah, go ahead. And so I want to make sure, because what we have is sometimes consensus, you know, thought, right? And then someone objects. And so what you're saying is if that happens, then an official vote has to be made.
What do you mean by consensus? What should I do there?
Um, like, if, oh god, um, we want to change our library's hours. Instead of taking a vote, the chair would say, do we have consensus? Four of the five people say, yes, and then someone says, I do not agree with that.
So that's where the general consent, unanimous consent would come in? That's really what you're talking to, is unanimous consent or unanimous consent. So that's where the chair says, if there is no objection or without objection, we will change the library hours from six o'clock to five o'clock. Pause, if there's no objection, then she carries on, makes the order, the changes made. If there is even a single person who objects, then it goes through the regular order. Yes, so the idea of consensus, you have a very informal, informal way of getting to a conclusion. But how can you find out what a consensus is? You're looking around the room, you're not seeing anyone object. You're not seeing anyone object. That's like taking a hook. You have questions?
Yeah, I think where that's come in a lot of times is on things that were we're not ready to vote like on a whole policy change, but we're just changing little things in between. Yeah, so we don't typically vote on, you know, like it's not an action item for every single word in there. It's usually just like, okay, should we change it this way? And, uh, so.
Basically, if you have a long, two, three-page, four-page policy, you would use what they call seriate them, or paragraph by paragraph, and go through it. You get your consensus and you go through the paragraphs. And once you're done with all the paragraphs and you have consensus on everything, go back to the very preamble to make sure that nothing's been changed. And then you modify that sort of, it's what you've changed down below if you have. And then you take a vote. If you don't have unanimous consent on the vote, you take a vote, calling up the names.
Yeah, so I guess. Um, so I think the question is like if we're just working on, you know, like one sentence of the whole three-page policy. We don't typically like do an official vote on that, it's just like, okay, does the majority want us to change this?
Right, you look around and you basically take a head count, right?
Uh, yeah. Or people say yes, but it's, yeah.
Essentially, it's like a show of hands, but you're getting a nod at the head. You're getting a sense of Thomas approving, and Tim approving, and Karen approving. Yeah, the two may not be, still be that majority.
Yeah.
Majority can.
Yeah, right.
The majority rules, right. Majority rules, that's the long and short of it. We have a republican form of government here in the United States. So the United States Constitution is over all of our federal government and controls in the states and localities where it's applicable. We can make laws subordinate to the Constitution, but we can't violate the Constitution to make laws. So we have to follow the higher law, if you will. In this case, for this board, you've got your bylaws, and then you've got your higher statutes. Have I left that question unanswered?
Uh, no, I think I got it. Do you have any other questions?
No, Mike, could you go over number three on the second page? There's no limited number of times. Just explain that paragraph.
In a board of 12 or more, Congress, an assembly, club, boardroom club, or something where you've got 50 members, and you're voting according to the Robert's Rules. Typically, every member has the right to speak two times, and only two times on any question, and up to 10 minutes for each question. Now, I've been in a lot of meetings, I've never seen anybody go over 10 minutes. So it's really hard to speak longer than 10 minutes. In a small board, you can speak 13, 15, 20 times to an issue if you want to. That's true. And then the question comes up, well, how do you stop that if people are tired of debate? And in small boards, I think it's note number three. Says however, motions to close or limit debate, and you can see the numbers 15 and 16. Robert's Rules of Order changed how they break up their book, so now they have sections. They have 63 sections about the entire book, the table of contents, where to find everything. So in sections 15 and 16, it talks about limiting debate and closing debate. So even in a small board, if it goes on and on and on, which has been known to happen, you can still limit that. It takes the majority, according to your bylaws, to accomplish that. So you can speak an unlimited number of times on a question, and even though you can do that, that can be closed off, that can be limited or changed by majority vote.
That's good.
Yeah?
Yeah, calling the question. That seems to put a stop to discussion too. How does that work exactly? When we keep, we keep talking back and forth and back and forth, and suddenly someone tries to say, I'd like to call the question. That basically means we want to call the question, meaning that whether the motion is just out there?
Call any question or the previous note, the previous question, basically means shut up and vote. That's what it means. The problem, and I've seen it exercised from people on my side of the issue, and I stopped it, is that people will hear the motion, they want to debate it, so they call the question right away. That's a dilatory motion right there. And the chair would have a responsibility to say, hey, we haven't debated this yet, let's open it up for some free debate. If it becomes a situation where you're active and it looks like it's exhaustive, the chair can either put the question on her own initiative, or somebody can call the previous question, and then it would be over.
So then you vote on that now that's on the floor?
You would, you would vote to shut up and vote on the main issue. Once you've approved the motion by majority vote, you call the question, and you move to the question itself. You can vote on that question. So your first act will prove. Call any question. And you move to the.
So people could, we vote for it, and then maybe it gets voted down, and so therefore, we're not going to actually vote on it yet. We've, we voted to not close the discussion, okay?
Right, so let's say you've got that three that say, no, we don't, we've got more, we want to talk about it, because it's a hot button issue, something really important is happening. And the majority will rule, you will lose that vote. So in the board of five, according to your bylaws, Article 3, Section 6, you require a majority vote on any issue. So that alters Robert's Rules. Your bylaws, these are your bylaws, your bylaws are over Robert's Rules and authority. So when your bylaws speak, it overrules Robert's. So a two-thirds votes in Robert's, a two-thirds vote required in Robert's is a majority vote because of your rules.
Any questions? Alright, well, thank you so much for giving me the time.
Thank you. Sounds easy. Sounds easy.
How long have you been doing parliamentarian stuff?
Oh, I started in the 90s, but it's been, yeah, it's been really intense. But I'll tell you, I still feel a lot of questions, right? And at just about every meeting I'm at, something slips by. What I, what I have found is that if you, if you proceed and you get stuff done without violating people's rights, sometimes things can be done not perfectly. But if it's the will of the majority, it still kind of works out. And the bottom line, if somebody wants to appeal something, they have to do it right down there. They can't look back at the, at the previous meeting, all the meeting. They have to do it then and there. Once another item of business comes up, that forecloses that possibility.
Alright, thank you so much. Alright, so, uh, next thing for meeting protocol is the meeting structure. Usually our monthly meetings are Thursday, excuse me, every month. The usual order is that all regular and controversial businesses first, then business that's been continued from a previous meeting, and then new business. But there's no statutory or policy requirements on that, so basically you can do the agenda, whatever works best for that particular meeting. Let's see. Alright, and then next we'll have job description, and trustee Hammon will lead that.
Looking for it now. Okay. Alright, I'm going to jump onto page 11 in the orange, orange manual, the trustee, Idaho trustee manual. And the initial part there, I marked it up. The library board is legally responsible for overseeing efficient and effective operation of the public library. Board members operating as a team hire the library director, plan the library services, and approve the library's policies. They decide how much the library will request for its budget. That's what we're doing that now. We did it. And they have a point in Idaho Code, exclusive control of the expenditure of library funds. And then the only other part on that page I circled was, again, this is kind of like, I'm rereading this stuff for myself prior to this meeting, refresh myself. So being a trustee is not just an honor, it's a responsibility. Good library board members do not just attend board meetings, they also take the time to study the role of the library trustee. They are aware of the laws that govern public agencies in general, and the public library in particular. They learn what is going on in the library community by participating in statewide library organizations and attending, continue, attending, continuing education opportunities. They read and understand the bylaws of their board and the policies of the library. They talk to members of the community about the library, and they bring this input with them to board meetings. Two other areas I have on that, I did print out after myself, I'm not going to read every word in this thing, but Title 33, Chapter 27 covers what the powers and duties of the board of trustees are, and they're rather specific. I'll run through as quickly as I can.
Can I interrupt?
Sure, I guess.
Where did you find that?
Oh, I'm sorry, Idaho's, it's an Idaho statute. It's probably referenced in this book here, I had to turn a few pages there.
Thinking one would be the statutes.
Yeah.
Okay, so 33.
33, 27, 20. And you're saying, there's a list of A through, let's see, no. J K, oh, here we go, oh. So, okay, yeah. So they have the following powers, the trustees have the following powers and duties. Again, establish bylaws for its own government. We have not changed the bylaws since I've been on the board for one year and a month or two. So they're established. Establish policies for the administration, operation, and use of the library, libraries under its control. So that's what we've been doing, establishing policies for the administration operation. Skipping down, create job descriptions, we've been dabbling in those, we get those usually from staff. We got those recently for about three or four different jobs that were updated. And those, jobs, personnel policies, which is a personnel manual, it's one of the manuals we have. So I guess we're the ones that approve the updates that are presented to us usually. And compensation packages, well, that was part of the budget. Establish the annual budget and oversee the financial management of library districts. Provide suitable rooms, structures, facilities, furniture, apparatus, and appliances. And then we acquire, devise, lease, or otherwise, go ahead and to hold real estate or property and so forth. So we can buy property and build buildings and repair buildings. Some, certain things require a bond, if it's an expansion or a new structure or a new, I don't know about buying a piece of property, but we accept gifts, real or personal property. We establish policies for the purchase and distribution of library materials. We issue warrants, I was confused with that one, I had to look it up, but it's a legal document that transfers ownership for real estate. Invest any funds of the district in accordance with public deposit through a law. And we pay actual unnecessary expenses for members of the library's staff when on business. And, let's see what else we got here. To see the proper conduct of library district elections. I thought it was a little interesting when I was running, I filed my application to be a trustee with the library. I thought, well, that's really weird, why don't I go to the elections office? The elections office, my understanding, simply facilitates the voting process. It's the library's elections taking place, actually. So we submit our paperwork to the library, and then the library, I guess, reviews it and in turn passes it on to the elections office, who actually executes or facilitates the actual election itself. So that was a wake-up for me, I didn't know that. Maintain the legal records of all board business and execute other powers. This, I think it's kind of a catch-all personally, this one here. Like other duties is assigned sometimes, you'll see in a job description, to exercise other powers not inconsistent with law necessarily to affect the use and management of the library. So we probably don't exercise that often, but I look at that as a rather powerful line item in this list of duties. And we have, this is important, what, individual trustees have no authority to make decisions about policies or library, except specifically authorized by the board. So I have zero authority to do anything, nor do you, we do as a whole, that's all. So that's a big deal. I don't think anyone's overstepped their bounds as an individual, to my knowledge, and demands to be done. And it's a duty of each trustee to attend all board meetings. I think some of the statute says, I think you need to be, you can't skip more than, two meetings? I'm not sure if, I think it's two meetings, then you got to be excused some capacity, but you're expected to attend all meetings for the, all board meetings.
Yeah, although our bylaw is actually saying four.
They say, okay.
But the statute would trump the bylaw, I'm not sure how that would all work out, but hopefully it'll all come up.
And so that one covered. I think it was all.
Consecutive meetings, consecutive.
I don't remember, it was specific, I can't remember.
It's consecutive.
Consecutive, okay. I think that's why I had that particular, oh yeah, the last, that's all. No, I didn't. I also found somewhere, there's in the, it was in a book we got, we, when I came on board, it's a library trustee job description back in 2016. So that's a square copy of it. So there's an actual position description or job description there. That's what I have on that subject.
Alright, well, then the next thing, I got most of this from the trustee orientation when I came on board. And then there's also, like I said, and then the trustee manual itself, but, okay. So the next thing was the CLN board calendar. And that was not scheduled out properly when it was made, so we haven't really been adhering to it too much. But we're, we're hopeful that the next year will go better.
Yeah, can I come along?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that shows all the different meetings, but I think it also showed things that were due at different times or persisting.
Yeah.
And then the other part of that was, some of the point I wanted to make on that, oh, and generally speaking, we rotate libraries in the summer months. So we have to drive in the snow to some farther out one, so I think, I don't know if we made all the rounds this year, but typically, I think most of the meetings, I think, are in post-falls library. And then, well, we rotate to the other outlined libraries throughout the summer months, so that the people that want to speak to the board also have, the board came to them, so that's.
Yeah, and just look at the bottom of the agenda.
And I would say that if you do look at the calendar that was provided to you today, in September, it's an approved board calendar. You all are technically supposed to be working on that in September, but we don't even have that on the agenda. So it might now to be moved until October, that just occurred to me that we did not have an inch of that. Because this is where you would determine, like, are you visiting the libraries in the summer? Are there specific policies that you want to work on? And so you set this up for next year at the end of the fiscal year, ideally.
Yeah. And I think what's happened is that the director pretty much just said, you know, here, here's what I think, and everyone's like, yep, that sounds good.
And I think also, was it part, is it two years we, or is it three, that we're, so it's review each policy? There's a certain frequency, three. And so that, that's what also plays into what goes on the calendar, is that we say, okay, staff, I guess, figured out, okay, these policies are all due for their three-year anniversary review. They got to get plugged into the calendar, the annual calendar. And I think part of what threw that backwards was the material selection policy and the withdrawals dragged on so many months to try and craft a finished document. And I think that could be a reason why we're probably going to be well behind on reviewing our other policies, so I guess. So I hope you understand where we, how we got to where we are.
Yeah, so just look at the bottom of an agenda, that's the next several meetings are usually accurate. Alright, so next is the bylaws. So read and know the bylaws, they're short, and pretty much all of it is really important, and it's like two pages. So some specific highlights are that there's articles on officers and meetings, and Section 6 in the meeting section, details that we follow by Robert's Rules of Order. They're small boards. And another article is library director and staff, and then committees, and then general, and, uh, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for texting me.
Anyway, so Section 1 in the last article modifies our adherence to Robert's Rule by, as Mr. Sommer said, that that any, any affirmative vote, excuse me, from the majority. Excuse me, from the majority of all members present is all that is needed to approve any action. So there's caveats to that, but there, there's some statutory things that are required that we do a two-thirds. Um, like going into executive session. But, but the right, Robert's rules has different requirements for a lot of different things, but our bylaws really simplify that, just like, nope, simple majority on everything. So. Alright, so the next thing is Idaho trustee manuals. Um, so when I started, I was advised not to read the manual because it was only used as a rare reference. That's total hogwash, there's so much good information in, in there. So I found all kinds of interesting things, it really helped me on the board, so. You know, whether you're the kind of person that likes to read it cover to cover, or just take it one section here and one section here, I would advise. Uh, eventually reading the whole thing. Uh, I also asked. Uh, the Idaho Commission for Libraries, the next time that they update the manual, if they could put an index in the back. Cause sometimes it's not always obvious where to find something from the table of contents. Uh, so hopefully someday that will be coming.
And I also find personally that the, their website is difficult to navigate, once you get it. Finding my way to where I want to go, I, I find it a little clumsy, but it's got a lot of information in there. I don't know if this information beyond what's in these books or not, I can't remember, but. I don't find navigating it easy, but there's lots of good stuff in it.
Yeah, and so Idaho Commission for Libraries is a governmental board over the whole state. And, uh, they, you know, they help all the libraries, so if you have questions that can't be answered by the chair or the director. And he, he was totally willing, he's like, yep, I'm, I'm available, you know, whenever, just ask any question that you have.
Can I comment on that one? Yeah, they also, as I think you were here when they were visiting, and they said they don't have a badge and a gun. They don't have authority over us, but they're an incredibly, um, good resource for information. So that, that's, they're not, again, that, we don't work for them, there's not a hierarchy or a pyramid looking at them, but. They got lots of information that, if I had this book and a few other things that they did. I struggle to figure out what the heck is my role here in the library, so. As I say, but they're not, they're not an authority over us, but they, they do have, and there is an entire standalone statute that discusses them. Um, it's somewhere in a book there, but it's thirty, thirty-three, twenty-five, oh, three. Talks about the li, the board of library commissioners, but anyway.
So this is called Idaho Commissioner or Commission.
Yeah, that's right, it's in the front cover of all those.
Yeah, the, the orange book, oh, not, not the little one.
I think they have videos on their website, if I remember correctly. Yeah, so there's, you know, whatever your learning style is, there, you can either read it or you can listen to someone summarize it. Um, okay, so the next thing is.
One more comment on that, I made a copy. Um, I thought, I read somewhere that the Idaho Commission for Libraries has some kind of a newsletter. I don't know what, I read that somewhere weeks or months ago. And then I contacted Clay Ritter. And we can get a, it's about a quarterly one, but because it's called the Nexus Newsletter, it comes out every quarter, so I wasn't aware of that. So if you want the name of it, there's a, it tells you. But I was unaware, I read it somewhere and I could not find what reference there, I think I already got. An email from them giving me a link to the latest.
I assume it's just digital.
Yes. That, that's my understanding. And, and they're all, there's a whole bunch of, not history, but you can look back at all the ones from the last couple of years or whatever.
Okay.
So you can see what they're talking about.
Alright, so under, um, that section, uh, is open meeting law, which is designed. Excuse me, designed to ensure openness and transparency, transparency for the public's business. Uh, meaning, meetings need be properly noticed and different types of meetings have different times, like they have to be. Published, you know, so far in advance. And so they have to be noticed first, which is where and the when. And then the agenda needs to be published as well, and the agenda is the what, so those are two different things. Right, and debate decisions need be made in public meetings, except some things defined in Idaho code. Maybe discussed in executive sessions, and they are narrowly defined. Uh, but final decisions still need to be made in a public meeting. A majority of trustees cannot discuss library business outside of a public meeting. It is also best practices for even two trustees to refrain from discussing library business. They can re-watch, I, I think you, you were present at Clay Ritter's presentation. Um, so all, all of our meetings, they get recorded properly, sometimes there's a snafu, but they get put on YouTube. So you can always re-watch something just to reinforce your knowledge. Um, anyway, yeah, so Clay Ritter's presentation was on there last month. Um, and there's also a really good training that we had from ICRAM, which is our insurance company. Uh, it was Jim McNall at the time, but he's now retired, but he gave an excellent presentation, I think it was like an hour or two. And that was in December of twenty-twenty-two.
I don't remember what month, but it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, open meetings, what, what?
Uh, it was a train, it was a, uh, Community Library Network training for the trustees.
What subject? Just a journal?
Um, I'm, I'm.
It was a lot of.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it was just all kinds of things that, you know, keep us in the, the good place with insurance and, and the law. Anyway, and so that, I think it was at the beginning of December and I'm pretty sure it's twenty-twenty-two. So. Um, anyway, and, uh, do not send group emails or respond to all if a group email is sent. Because that can violate open meeting laws. Um, and even if it doesn't technically violate it, it still gives the appearance of it, so it's just better to, to not even do that at all. Um, alright, so ethics is on page twenty-four of the big orange manual. Uh, there's actually not very much in there, it's just, there's a, a section entitled that. Uh, it refers to a statement by a non-governmental organization, so it is non-binding, but still has a lot of value, and I. That, that's the United for Libraries, I think that's just two pages. Actually, it's mostly just one page, there's a little bit on the second page. Um, anyway, so a lot of good stuff on there, even if it isn't binding. Um, let's see, oh, and then there's the, being one of the small manuals is. All about ethics and laws and everything. Uh, the relationship with the director, uh. Can all be summed up by support and trust or key, uh, and that. Works best, or maybe only works at all, if it goes both ways. Um, and that has significantly improved lately and it's, and our board meetings a lot better. Uh, and I hope that we continue on that pathway. Um, the Public Records Act has its own blue manual, but one of the little ones, I think. Um, and there's also. Clay Ritter presented on that last month as well, so you can go back and, and watch that. Okay, and then. Some other things, the, the library mission, uh, the code and statutory reason for libraries is found in thirty-three, twenty-seven, oh, one. It's. The, the state of Idaho law to establish and encourage libraries as a part of the provisions for public education. Would you like to s- speak just briefly on the mission of our specific library?
Um, our mission is that we empower discovery. And so it's, you know, very straightforward in that we wish for people to, um, broaden their knowledge. With active things, reading material, programming, um, anything that will help them discover. It's a really, I think it's one of my favorite library mission statements I've ever worked under. Um, cause you can really apply it to many different areas.
Thank you, that was more inspirational than I would kind of give. Glad I asked you. Alright, uh, so organizational chart, let's see where. Looks like that, um, but since we've been restructuring our staff for a couple of years, trying to consolidate. Part-time, part-time positions into full-time positions. It's not very accurate, but hopefully when we get done with all the restructuring, we will have one that's more accurate. Anyway, that, that's what it looked like a few years ago. Alright, and then, uh, also included were last year's minutes, just. As if you read through, you know, everything that happened the year prior, well, actually, it's just the regular meetings. Um, it'll just give you a good idea of what we've been doing and.
Will you just punch your microphone off? I feel like, was it your phone last time?
I think.
Maybe, but it's been there the whole time.
Okay.
Apparently now it's just added. Like I took it as long as I could. Um, alright, yeah, so just reading through the last year's sort of minutes will get you up to speed pretty quickly. Uh, strategic plan, looks like that. Uh, we had that done just a, a couple of years ago. Uh, I thought it was boilerplate, a lot of people have told me it's boilerplate, and we even had a nationally recognized library expert. Told us that it was boilerplate, it does have a lot of good things in it, but it just didn't seem like it was super specific to our library. Um, and it says that it's, you know, up and through twenty-twenty-five, so, you know, hopefully in the next year, we'll. We'll get around to updating that and making it more applicable to our library.
What do you mean by boiler? Do you mean just?
Oh, what, just general, yes.
Cut and paste.
Okay.
I don't know what it is, but.
Yeah.
So it's not cut and paste, not, sorry.
I exaggerate, I exaggerate when I said that.
I mean, cause we did do, we did focus groups, we did surveys, we, um, and I'm, when I say we, I mean the consultants that we hired. Um, so. It is, I feel like a very thorough, uh, strategic plan, it's just that we are not putting effort and resources into adhering to it at this point.
Yeah, I did read when I looked at this strategic plan recently, again, it was put together with, I think, a number of members of the board. Staff, a person or two, members of the community and some other personnel, I think it was about, about, oh, six or eight different people.
The steering committee.
Okay, they get, yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, anyway, so, you know, go ahead and, and look through it and find, you know, what you think is valuable and, 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 you know, we. Play on the next one, that'll come in handy. Um, okay, so there's a packet of our current policies, so you, you know how the, the library is governed. Alright, uh, and then previous year's budgets, I asked for those to be put in there, just cause then it's easier for you to compare, you know, what we're doing now. What did we do, you know, two, three, you know, one or two or three years ago? That'd be useful.
Yep.
Uh, then I had some general tips, uh, I already mentioned, don't be shy about following the chair or the director. Uh, or the Idaho Commission for Libraries when you have questions. Uh, but everyone is welcome to respond to emails sent to their email address. And then should do our best to keep it legal and polite. One can always find something positive, even if they disagree with the content. Uh, and we've been advised not to respond to any emails with a legal threat or question in them, because. You know, we don't want to get ourselves in hot water. You know, we, those emails should be sent to our attorney and, uh, but in delicate. Uh, approving minutes is, well, you've been on the board before, um, so it's not saying that you agree with your content, it's just saying, okay, I approve this to go into the record.
You have a question.
Okay.
So if, if there was an email that was a threat, you know, whatever. As a chair, do you say, you know, go ahead and forward this to the attorney, I mean. How, how does that come about? Uh, they would know to do that, or you would suggest that they should do that?
Uh, yeah, I usually, alright, I have forwarded some, um, do you also do that, when you find something concerning?
Yes, I mean, um, with the prior chair, there would be emails sent directing, uh, the director to. Send this to the, um, attorney, but I think it appears to be working by having. One or both of us, um, send them, so.
I have a question on that.
Yeah.
Uh, does the public have our attorney's address as well? Do they ever send things directly to him? Through the, the same board that they send us emails?
Um, not that I know of, and it seems like that would get expensive really quick.
Right.
So.
Do you know if they, if the, uh, public has access to?
I mean, he, like, our attorney does not res, the public does not have a way through our website or through our own email to email our attorney. Usually they would have to go to his website or go to him.
Sure, okay, that's good to know. Um, since we're on the subject, so we're gonna stop all this Russian stuff coming in. And now it's gonna get worse, now we're getting like other stuff.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know.
I can talk to you, I can speak about it again. It's just, it's hard, cause we're getting like spammed, right?
Yeah, I can see this like literally getting worse. And it's not like it's that hard for me to just be like, I just didn't know if you knew it was happening.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Alright, well, that is all I mean.
They're getting juicy.
Can I ask you one thing?
Yes.
Okay. Um, one thing that I have really appreciated about the Community Library Network is. That there is respect for the relationship between the, um. Trustees and the director and, um, all communication is funnelled through the director and the trustees aren't reaching out to individual staff. Um, so I think if we can maintain that, because the director would be the one that gives assignments to the staff. Not the board members, and so I'm really impressed by how we've adhered to it, and I think it'd be great if we can continue that path, so.
Okay, so do you two have any other tips that you would like to pass on, things that were particularly helpful to you when you were new?
Well, I'm really sorry that I missed the first half, because, um, it sounded like it was. Um, you know, informative, the part that I did hear, so no, I don't have anything, I don't think that I could add right now.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. The next thing is the special and regular meeting dates. Is that all that we have?
Just tonight's, I'm in the ready order.
Okay, without objection, we will move on to the next section, which is adjournment. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion that we adjourn.
Okay, it has been moved, we adjourned, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, it is unanimous and we are now adjourned.